Hello? Good evening and welcome to the Wycomico County Council. This is the Constant Yield Hearing and the Budget Hearing. We will begin with the Constant Yield Hearing and we'll start with a short presentation by Andy Mackel.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, the county council of Wycomico County proposes
The county council of Wycomico County proposes to increase real property taxes. For the tax year beginning July 1, 2014, the estimated real property assessable base will decrease by 3.1 percent from $5,812,56,843 to $5,632,599,187. If Wycomico County maintains the current tax rate of .9086 dollars per $100 of assessment, real property tax revenues will decrease by 3.1 percent resulting in a $1630,552 reduction in real property tax revenues. In order to fully offset the effect of decreasing assessments, the real property tax rate could be increased to .9375 dollars per hundred, the constant yield tax rate. The county is considering increasing its real property tax rate above the constant yield tax rate. The county proposes to adopt a real property tax rate of .9516 dollars per $100 of assessment. This tax rate is 1.5 percent higher than the constant yield tax rate and will generate $794,196 in additional property tax revenues. This is the public hearing on the proposed real property tax rate. Thank you.
If there are any comments on the constant yield or the tax increase this year, there will be another opportunity for public comment when we do the budget hearing as well. Okay. Well, this concludes the public hearing for the Constant Yield. Next, we will have the budget hearing and Matt Kramer will do an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Did that first couple of minutes remind you of a scene from The Wizard of Oz? It did me. As Mr. Mackel has explained, with the constant yield rate, the county executive has prepared and is recommending to the county council a budget for fiscal 2015 of $129,434,069. The revenues to support that level of expenditures comes 40.5 percent from the real property tax, 8.2 percent from the personal property tax, and 30.6 percent from the local income tax representing almost 84 percent of total county revenue. The balance comes from 2.1 percent in the recordation tax, .7 percent from other taxes, 1 percent from licenses and permits, 8.5 percent from intragovernmental transfers, 3 percent from service charges, and .2 percent revenue derived at the Wycomico County Detention Center. It is noteworthy that in addition to a property tax rate to the extent allowed by the revenue cap, the budget as presented will be balanced through the use of $6.45 million of carry-forward As I look around the room, I see that many of you have been here before. So, we will go through each category of the budget this evening and as I name them off, I will be looking around the room and if anyone wishes to speak to anything in that area, please go to the microphone that's about two-thirds of the way back from the front. We ask you to always speak into the microphone because tonight's public hearing is also being broadcast and recorded by PAC 14 and if you're not at the microphone, no one in the television audience will be able to hear you. As has been the practice in the past, the rather overwhelming dialogue with regards to Board of Education, and there's usually very little said about the other portions of the budget. So, we will go through the other portions of the budget and pick up the Board of Education at the end. If after we have passed a category of expenditures or a department and you think of something that you wish you had said, there will be time at the end. I will ask, is there anyone who has something that they want to say about something we've already heard? So, if you don't think of it right away, don't worry. This purpose of this hearing, that's why they're called public hearings, the purpose of this hearing is to hear from those of the public who have assembled. We begin with Fund 50. She's right on the dot. Legislative county council function. Next, Fund 02 is Circuit Court. Next is Orphans Court. Administration, the county executive's office. I'm not lingering long on each of these categories because I trust that those of you who have enough interest in this subject to be here tonight have already reviewed the budget online. If that's not the case, and I'm going too fast for you, please ask me to slow down. Fund 06 is Community Promotion. Followed by Elections. Public Accountant. This is the fund from which the county's independent auditor is paid from. Purchasing Administration. Human Resources. Planning and Zoning. General Services. Liquor License Board. Salisbury Fire and Ambulance. Volunteer Fire Companies. Emergency Services. Protection of Animals. Public Works. Sanitation, Water and Sewer. Weed Control. Mosquito Control. Gypsy Moth Control. We'll come back to the next. Community College. I can, but I don't think your mic's on. Try it now.
Hello?
Hello.
Okay. Hi, my name is Maida Finch. I'm an Assistant Professor at Salisbury University and I'm also a member of the Library Board of Directors and I'm here today to encourage you to fund the public library at their requested budget. We moved to Salisbury just a couple of years ago and one of the first things my family and I did was go and get our library cards and the library's been operating in the red since the 2009-2010 fiscal year. One of the greatest effects of that is that the library is closed on Sunday and I can tell you as a working mother how many times my children have asked me if we could go to the library on Sunday and we can't and I'm sure that other citizens have that same concern, but there are other ways that the library is struggling to meet the budget as well. As a library board member, I can tell you that we've reached the point where the auditors say that we will not be able to spend any more of the fund balance and we'll have to consider additional cuts in order to budget the balance if we aren't able to receive the monies that we need for this upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Andrea Bursler. I am a resident of Wycomico County and I'm also the Executive Director of the Public Library. I am also wanting to speak to the library's fund balance, the funding proposed by the budget there. In 2010, the library, like many other county agencies, received a funding cut. Ours was 40 percent. Was the largest cut of any county-funded agency at the time. Like other agencies, we reduced our expenses, we cut hours, we cut staff, we reduced programs, we bought fewer books. We kept what we could, we used our fund balance to make up the difference, and we kept serving as many people as we could. Because we got our fund cut, it's not why you should vote for the funding level as it's proposed in this budget. There were a number of losses from that cut. We lost our adult literacy program, we lost Sunday hours, we lost evening hours, we cut 19 staff positions, we even lost the possibility of a new building. What we gained, however, was that we were allowed to refocus our work and our mission and we became much more efficient. We are a better library today in many ways than we were five years ago. We have transformed our spaces, we have engaged our community, we have renewed our programs, we have built partnerships and launched our new Friends of the Library, all of this with a new sense of enthusiasm about the library and its work. We have come to the point where we can no longer use our fund balance to budget, to balance our budget. We have repeated requests to open on Sunday for many families where there is no other time for them to come. We are the library with the lowest per capita funding in the state of Maryland and we were just awarded the Maryland Library Association's President's Award for Excellent Service with the lowest per capita funding. It is time for this county to demonstrate support for the library, to supply the funds that this educational, cultural, and recreational organization needs to serve our growing community, to demonstrate support for the library's increasing growth and partnerships such as our new partnership with Warwick where we hope to bring adult education to downtown Salisbury. I ask you to supply these funds to the library so we can balance our budget, be open on Sunday, and supply the books, movies, and music requested by this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bursler. Someone else?
My name is Floyd Twolley. I live in Parsonsburg. My family moved to Salisbury in 1961 when I was eight years old. By that time, I was already a regular visitor at the county library. At that point, it was that dear brick building that sits next to Route 50, very near the John Beuhardsen's home. I remember as a youngster, having left my weekly piano lesson, my treat was to go to the library and I entered a world of adventure. To this very day, when I enter the library, I'm entering that same world of adventure. What will I discover today? What will I find today? What will I learn today? As a published author, the library is a wealth of research for me, not only about this area, but about the whole world. To be enriched by such a public resource for all of my life now at age 61, I have to reinforce, as I'm sure many feel, this is a valuable educational, social, and cultural resource this county cannot do without and it deserves every bit of support we can muster. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Twolley.
My name is Mary Ashantin. I'm President in Wycomico County, NAACP, and I'm going to apologize in advance for not following directions. I rise to talk about Corrections. We ask you to support the executive budget of, for Department of Correction because we're concerned about Rehabilitative Services and we ask you to support.
Moving on then to Tri-County Council. Community Access Channel, that should say PAC 14. Thank you again for letting many, many more people than who are here tonight take advantage of this opportunity of public hearing. Mr. Gillis.
Congratulations on the birth of your grandchild, Matt.
Thank you.
The fifth?
Go ahead.
My name is Brad Gillis and I'm representing the Chamber of Commerce tonight as a past president. Excuse me. Well, not necessarily want to talk about the line item of economic development, but necessarily the category of economic development and as a community, I believe confidently in saying that we can do and continue to do more and it's about innovation, it's about entrepreneurship, and it's about supporting the community that we have and inspiring the ideas that are within this community. And I know that comment that I just made is 30,000-foot, I get that, but what we are doing in our community right now is boots on the ground and through Third Fridays, through what Gary is doing with tourism, through what Andrea is doing at the library, all of that is economic development and what I need to do as a community is keep that going and I feel confident in saying that we are doing and we are on the right track and please, please, continue to invest in entrepreneurship and also invest in innovative ideas. We have an opportunity in Salisbury, Maryland, to become a leader in this field with facts. Shark Tank was just here at SU. We had more people that auditioned at Salisbury University, Salisbury University in Salisbury, Maryland, than Boston and Massachusetts did. That is extremely inspiring. So, if we as a community get behind the idea that we can do this, we will. Again, it's not one item, it's not, economic development is 10 things to 10 different people and, but it's how the web interacts and again, going back to quality of life, going through tourism, parks and recreation, the Civic Center, the library, all the assets that we have as a community, in addition to education, it's all interwoven. So, again, I know it's a line item in the budget and it's a minor line item again, so again, please support economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillis. Pensions and Retirement. Hospital and Disability, that's medical insurance. Workman's Compensation and Liability Insurance. Debt Retirement, these are our mortgage payments. Social Services. The page with blanks are because of those activities coming out of enterprise status and reorganization of the departments. The Teen Adult Center, better known today as Duff Point. Did I skip Rhodes? Yes, thank you, Mr. Mackel. Local Management Board. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is April Jackson and I am the President of Salisbury Vice Republic Council on Youth Activity. I'm a Commissioner for Parks and Recreation and I'm also a member of Safe Street. I'm coming to you this evening asking you that you allocate our monies, our funds towards having our open gym again. I think that looking back when I was younger and the open gym was at that time open, I had like, there was hardly, I mean, I know there was crime, but it wasn't as prevalent as it is today. I see our young people is not having any recreation really at all from the ages of 16 on up. There's nowhere for them to go. We don't have the Salvation Army at 15-years-old. They're no longer able to go to Salvation Army. They have stopped the violence. They can no longer go to stop the violence. I think if we open these gyms up again, to some point, our crime will not go away, but it will decise to some numbers because our young men and women need somewhere to go. There's nowhere for them to go and I'm asking you, I'm begging you to please do this, just if you just open one gym up, just to see how this goes. I'm asking you to do this for our community and our city and our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Youth and Civic Center. Need new mics. Does it work? State Mandates. I'm being just facetious, Gary. Commission on Aging. Life Crisis Center. That concludes the categories in the general fund. We'll skip back to the page with Board of Education.
Good evening.
Yes, Dr. Handy?
My name is Margot Handy and I am the Assistant Superintendent for Instruction and Student One doesn't have to look very far or go very far to see the vast changes in education. Just step into any of our schools and you will see how education has changed over the past even two years. Many of these changes are due to curricular expectations and mandates from the Maryland State Department of Education and the United States Department of Education. Due to these mandates, yes, we are asked to change. We are asked to continue to provide quality instruction and education for every student who enters through our doors. This comes at a price and unfortunately, many of those expectations do not come with any funding. It is often said that a community is only as good as the school system and yes, the speaker before me spoke about crime in the community. Well, one of the ways to decrease crime is to have engaging opportunities for the students in the classroom. Where does this begin and how does this begin? It first begins with a highly qualified, well-paid teaching and administrative staff in the school buildings. It also means that teachers need to have materials and students need to have materials. It also means that teachers need to have materials and students need to have materials. Those materials are far beyond the paper and pencils that we had when we were in schools. It is now everything technologically based. Everything that we do in school in instruction on a daily basis is the use of technology. The use of technology for instruction every day as well as online assessments. That costs money because we need to build our infrastructure as well as the need to have increasing numbers of equipment, including laptops, also other devices for our students to use. In addition to that, we also must be reassured that we are always in compliance with making sure that we have the appropriate number of staff for our students who are our special needs students as well as our students who speak other languages. 14 years ago, when I was supervisor of the English for Speakers of Other Languages, there were 200 students who were considered English language learners. Currently, there are 603 English language learners in our schools. We are held accountable for not only teaching, but for showing that we are closing the gap and making progress with English language learners as well as our special needs students. Council, I also ask, please, take a look at some of the nonrecurring costs that we have also submitted because these costs will greatly impact our students positively as well, of course, as their future. Some of those things include the instructional software, as I mentioned before. The instructional software is needed to continue to, of course, enhance our instructional program as expected by the Maryland State Department of Education. We often hear about safe schools and the need for additional radios, cameras, et cetera, in our schools. Everybody can tell us what we need to do, but no one says, here's the money to do it. That comes at a cost. The additional upgrades that are needed for the schools with technology, the laptops, the pre-kindergarten, we all have heard about pre-K for all. Well, we also have a need for pre-K teachers to teach those pre-K students that we anticipate in the future. But again, it begins, all of this cannot happen without a well-trained, competent, certified staff such as our teachers, administrators, and all the support personnel. With that said, again, I encourage you to please fund education to its fullest, including looking at some of the nonrecurring cost appropriations that we have requested to ensure that we are giving our students the best that we can possibly give them so that Wycomico County continues to be, as much as possible, an outstanding place to live and where others will want to come and join us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Handy.
Good evening. My name is Kim Hudson. I am a current board member for the Wycomico County Public Schools and also a parent in this community. My two children attend middle school and an elementary school and I feel firsthand whenever we have budget issues in our schools. I listened to Brad and I so agree with everything that he said. Economic development is hugely important for the future of our community. And I feel with all my heart that the biggest and best investment we can make for our community is education. When people are coming to this community, they are looking at our schools and this is nothing new, I've said this before, but our schools are one of the number one draws to people coming to this area. I sit here tonight and I know what dollars you have in front of you for education. I know what Mr. Pollitt has submitted. I know that includes a 2.2 reduction, 2.2 million dollar reduction from what we requested. And I know that there's $88,584 above maintenance of effort that you have before you that you could grant to the Board of Education. I ask that you fund those dollars to us fully, that you not make any additional cuts from what Mr. Pollitt has already requested, that you'll hear from others tonight about how those cuts are going to impact us, about how we as a Board of Ed have already been cut in many years prior, how the pie for Wycomico County shrunk and how the Board of Education's piece of the pie also shrunk. And we ask that we retain the maintenance of effort dollars to help us continue to make education the investment for our community, to help with economic development, with crime, with keeping our certified staff, with attracting and retaining all of our teachers and for providing the best education we can for the students of Wycomico County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Mrs. Ashanti.
Okay, my name is Mary Ashanti and I represent Wycomico County NAACP as its president. We ask that you support the county executive Pollitt's proposed budget for the Board of Education. We are concerned about school safety and we would like to see some of those dollars used to make sure that all security cameras are manned at all times while schools are in session. We are also concerned about making sure that the school system have qualified social workers to address some of the needs of the children. So again, we support Mr. Pollitt's recommendation.
Thank you, Mrs. Ashanti. Dr. Frederickson.
Thank you. I'm John Frederickson. I'm a resident of Wycomico County. I'm Superintendent Schools for the Wycomico County Schools and I'm delighted to have the opportunity to address you this evening. I'm going to talk about a few different things and then I'm going to be going and giving a speech over at Pittsville. So I hope you won't think I'm not interested if I leave before your meeting ends. We're real concerned about being able to retain the people that we have. We have fantastic employees. And so whatever funding that we can possibly secure, we want to drive those dollars into the classroom, whether it's teachers, whether it's support staff, it's administrators that are going to deal with the discipline for a child or it's somebody out there that's planning the activities that are possibly going to bring another school building online. We're real concerned as far as funding cuts we're having to make. We're looking at reducing construction project funding. That means parking lots, most of the parking lot problems that we have today probably can still be there next year under the current proposals that we're looking at in terms of trying to address the dollars that we see possibly being allocated. We're looking at deferred maintenance is going to stay deferred. We're looking at the concerns for computer leases. We're supposed to be going to a new computerized testing system called PARC. Won't go into the test at all, but for two bucks a kid, we can do it on paper and pencil. But your kids are not going to be competing with kids on paper and pencil. Your kids are going to have to compete with kids around the globe on technology, whether it's computers, laptops, tablets, cell phones, you name it. But they need to use technology and if they're going to be performing at that, they have to be tested on that. And that's what we want to do, but the money right now isn't there. We're concerned about even just small little things. We had this wonderful project last fall. It all came through the legislature saying we want to expand authorization and do some things to encourage young people who qualify for free and reduced meals to get into college early. So we have this dual enrollment program. 60% of our students qualify for free and reduced meals. After a major amount of promotion last year, we wound up with eight out of 92 students in our fall quarter dual enrollment program going to dual enrollment. Eight out of 92. It should be 60 or 55 out of 92. Problem is transportation. So we talked to the Chamber of Commerce, we talked to Shore Transit. We put together a plan to possibly have transportation for these kids. 13,000 bucks. Well, that's on our one-time projects, trying to see if we can at least try it and see what happens, maybe get a grant for it. Well, guess what? That didn't get to your table. And we're concerned. We want to be able to do these things. Right now, we're trying to scrape dollars from here and there and steal from Peter and Paul to try at least get 6,500 bucks to try and do it for one semester to see if that will make a difference. Our kids that qualify for free and reduced meals are smart kids too and they should be represented in the college situation so they can try that. Possibly that'll encourage them to graduate from high school and go on to college. We're concerned about safe schools. A lot of news about safe schools in the area. Well, guess what? We were requesting $46,000 from county coffers to replace some outdated radios. Sorry, but that's not going to make it at this time. We're looking at setting up an emergency trailer with cones and vests and radios and various equipment so that when something happens at a school, we can in minutes mobilize and make it to that school with the equipment that we need to do that. That's on the chopping block. We're looking at touch sensitive whiteboards. If you've been in a classroom lately and I'd be delighted to tour any of you around the schools, you call me up and we'll set up a time and we'll get you out there. Kids today are learning on touch sensitive whiteboards where the kids touch the thing and they can move back and forth between PowerPoint and videos and things of this nature. We were going to finish out our project with Fruitland Primary and Fruitland Intermediate. It's about $233,000. That's on the chopping block. We're looking at technology upgrades to be able to do not only curriculum adjustments, but also to make sure we have the throughput. You know, it's one thing to have the laptop or the tablet in your hand, but you have to have something that picks up the signal, you have to have something that processes it. And when you have, say, eight or 9,000 kids all hitting enter at the same time with their ID for the testing, you've got to have some wires behind the wall, some fiber optic behind the wall and switches and other gadgets or it's not going to go anywhere. They're going to be sitting there hitting return. And we were all seventh grade once. I remember being in seventh grade and you know, patience is not a virtue at seventh grade. We're looking at our final security upgrades. I want to say thank you for the support you gave last year for us to do some one-time projects and some security. And if you remember, back in January, we reported back that we did all of our level ones and level twos and we're working on levels three and four now. We'd like to finish that off, but that's not on the funding side of things right now. That's $883,000 and we would be delighted to do those activities. By the side of the coin, we have to have dollars. That's the lifeblood for my services for our children. We look at trying to get some computers in terms of the, some of the newer technology. It seems like there's a lot of movement towards pads and iPads and Samsung and all these other brands. I don't care what brand it is, but we're trying to put one rolling cart in every elementary of 25 of these and most likely there'll be iPads for the educational software that we're using. That got on the chopping block. We want to increase the number of kindergarten and pre-kindergarten classrooms that are set up exactly according to state standards. The state folks have brought in teachers from across the state and looked at what are the things you need to have to have a successful program in kindergarten and pre-kindergarten. By the way, kindergartners are reading and writing stories now. It's critically important. What we used to teach in first and second grade has now migrated down to kindergarten and pre-kindergarten. That's critically important. We can get those kids to succeed. And where the opportunity gap exists, where the achievement gap exists, it does not start in 10th grade. It starts when the kid is three and four years old. And we can address that, but we have to have the tools to do that. The kindergarten handicap or equipment for those kids, that's $159,000 across the whole system. That's on the chopping block. We don't want things on the chopping block. We want to be teammates with our Chamber of Commerce, with our library. You know, we had 1,000 art pieces at the library the other night. You couldn't find a place to park. It was fantastic. And we want to do more things like that because we believe we can build a strong community with your teamwork and your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Frederickson. Ms. Elmore.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Carolyn Elmore. I'm a resident of Wycomico County. I have been a teacher in this county for longer than I will admit tonight, a teacher and administrator. And I am currently serving on the Board of Education. I'd like to thank you for all that you have done for us in the past, but you know why I'm here. I'm not here to talk about what you've done in the past. I'm here to talk about what we need for our future, for Wycomico County's future, for the children who grow up in this county and their future. And maybe for your future because they will pay for our social security if it's still around when some of us collect it. I'm there already, I have to admit that. I'm asking you to support the budget that you've been sent. As Mrs. Hudson has told you, it's already been cut 2.2 million dollars. We're asking for you to support that 88,000 remaining dollars above the MOI that we qualify for based on our enrollment. If you cut it more, we will not only cut the maintenance and the technology that has been addressed before, but we will be cutting our future. Memo Dericker has talked about education in Wycomico County as an economic engine. You have heard Brad Gillis say tonight that education is also important to the economic development of this county. I have three children. Only one has remained employed on the eastern shore. In July of this year, he will move his family to Texas to an aerospace engineering job because that's not available for him here at the rate that he will make for the future of his family. I have loved living on the eastern shore and there are many, many families who love living on this eastern shore. There are many people who would love it if they would come, but because they're afraid of what we cannot offer their children in the field of education, they will not come. Dr. Frederickson has talked to you about the need for technology, not just for instruction, but for testing. We are required with this new PARC testing to do it online or we could pay $2 for paper and pencil, as he said. But children don't just use a computer to take a test on the day the test is given. They have to know how to use it to do well in that testing situation. In a year or two, the quality of our teachers and their evaluations will be measured by the results of those tests. Were I still in the classroom, I would be quite frightened to think that my job and how well I did it was dependent upon a student's success when there wasn't enough support behind the wall for the computer to work properly. Just think of that. Would you like your job evaluation to be based on a situation where a computer would fail? So not just the student fails, but perhaps the teacher and the principal of that building will fail. We have unfunded mandates from the General Assembly. I had a very close friend who was up there fighting to keep taxes low and mandates sensible enough for the eastern shore. Those folks across the bay have the power and the voting authority to mandate whatever they want. And this year, they've put a few more that will affect education. But there were no dollars attached to those mandates, nor will they be. Before we can do what we need to do for our children in this county, we have to fund the things they say we have to do, not what we know. we have to fund the things they say we have to do, not what we know they need, and that's important. We can't hope to keep our high-quality teachers and give them the raises they deserve if we are constantly cut, cut, and cut. This past Sunday, my minister preached a sermon based on a very popular country song, "Live Like You Were Dying." And it is the story of a man who finds that he's dying. And Mr. Kramer heard that same sermon after we congratulated him on the birth of Matthew the Fifth. What would you do differently if you knew it were your last chance to do it? Would you love more deeply? Would you speak more clearly? Would you think more sensibly? Would you support education more wholeheartedly? For some of you who are leaving us regrettably, this is your last chance. This is your legacy. Will it be one where the children and the people who live here know you cared about education and who cared, you cared about the quality of what we can offer our children? I know you care, and I hope your care will, your caring will help you keep those dollars, that pitiful eighty-eight thousand dollars that we're here begging you to keep in the budget submitted to you. It doesn't sound like a lot, but it will do more than we could possibly do if you cut it. So please, live like it's your last chance to help education in Wycomico County. We have some very fine representatives of our school system, one sitting at the head of your table, one behind me from the chamber, one behind me from the city council. Those three fine young men are graduates of our system, and we're proud of them. And we hope that they and all of you can find a voice to live like the legacy you leave shows the people here that education is important. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elmore.
Good evening. My name's Kathy Vale. I am a parent in the county. I'm also an administrator for the Board of Ed and the president of the Administrators Association. Let me start by saying thank you. I can't imagine the difficulties that you must face when you have to try and balance the budget every year. I won't even propose to try and speak as eloquently as Dr. Elmore. I just want to reiterate a couple of points. I heard, speaking of the importance of education into economic development, and I can't say that again, again, and again without recognizing in front of you for the times, and we said it last year and the year before, we need you to support us as an engine for that economic development. I went to a breakfast where each of you spoke, and several of you recognized the importance of economic development. Supporting education is one of the avenues in order to make that happen. We each know that people moving into the community will ask about the quality of the schools. That is no new information, so we ask that you support us. But beyond that, we keep going back to the maintenance of effort and our declining enrollment so that there's this eighty-eight thousand dollar difference between maintenance of effort this year and the coming year. If we fund only maintenance of effort this year, obviously, that's losing ground. And we need to make sure that at a minimum, we can't lose ground. Maintenance of effort plus the eighty-eight thousand to maintain the current funding level is an absolute essential. As a parent and as an administrator, I get the inside view that most parents don't get a chance to see. I see the increased sizes in the classes. I see the infrastructure issues with facilities and the inability to put the adequate money into the repairs that are needed. I see the sharing that has to go from classroom to classroom, not only on the impact on my child, but then the adopted eight-hundred kids at the school in which I work, and as well as the administrators struggling as we share things from building to building, which things age much more quickly the more we have to do the sharing. Finally, I just wanted to make sure, you know, we've been using the word "ask" for the several years that I've been coming here, and I really believe at this point in time, we need to make it clear that we can no longer ask for your support. It's an absolute necessity. We need maintenance of effort plus the additional eighty-eight thousand so that the funding is maintained. At a minimum, that doesn't even take into account providing our people with any kind of raise that would add to health, to have them compensate for the health benefits. That is just the absolute bare minimum. We ask that you at least fund that level. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vale. All right. I don't see anyone else at this point. This is a time we'll go back and give you the opportunity to speak to something which has already been addressed. Someone slipped me a note that I missed the sheriff's department. I said sheriff's office. That's the legal name, and that I missed MAC. I think when you see it on TV, you'll see that I got them both. But we'll be happy to revisit either of those and any other subject that you wish. Mr. Tillman?
My name is Matt Tillman. I'm a resident of Salisbury and also obviously Wycomico County. I'm actually here to speak in support of Mr. Pollitt's proposed tax rate increase. The constraints of the revenue cap have kept our county from a windfall due to rapidly rising, increasing real estate values and have benefited the taxpayers. With a major decrease in new construction and falling real estate values, now we must take the increase that's been proposed. We have to maintain our financial strength to protect our bond financial rating for our long-term future. We have to invest, as you've heard earlier, in our education system for our children, our grandchildren, as well as providing an educated workforce for our businesses and our prospective businesses. We have to play by the established rules. The revenue cap swings both ways. We cannot just take the good side when it pulls the rate down. We need to pay up when the pendulum swings the other way. If we do not take the increase over the constant yield, it will cost the, reduce the revenue by about eight-hundred thousand dollars. Everybody needs to understand when that happens, that's not just one year. Because of the revenue cap, that eight-hundred thousand dollars is gone forever, never to be regained again. And this county, I've spent most of my life in this county and in this community. And it is critically important that we be financially solvent and that we are growing and that we are making this a place that people want to come to. I find it very disturbing when people tell me, "Oh, I'm not interested in moving to Salisbury or Wycomico County because of the education system." That, to me, is an unacceptable statement for us. So I encourage you to support Mr. Pollitt's proposed tax increase. And that, as a Republican, I find that hard to say, but I think it's critical at this particular juncture for us to make that move. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Yes, go to the microphone, sir.
My name is Donnie Ward, and I am a resident of Wycomico County and attended the public school system that we had here. I don't want to offend anybody, but I'm seventy-eight-year-old. And I have listened to all the comments, very educated people. And I understand that things go on, and by that I mean progress. But one thing I think through county, state, and federal government, spending never stops. And senior citizens such as I that have spent my time, my lifetime here trying to establish what I could establish for my old age is no longer secure. So it would be great to fund everything that everybody at this meeting would like to have. And I would like to see that done. But it's not going to just come from this group here that is in the want. It is going to come, if it comes, from the taxpayers' property tax being increased. I built a small home twenty-seven years ago on Ward Road. My property taxes at that time were four-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars. Last year's taxes on the same property, twenty-seven-year-old, was over thirteen-hundred dollars. That's what my taxes on a small property have increased in twenty-seven years. And like I say, it doesn't stop, and evidently, it's not going to. There's nothing I can do about it, and nothing nor the taxpayer can do about it. So really, all I'm saying is, just when you're considering where the money's coming from, realize you got a lot of senior citizens, they gotta pay taxes on property. And every time you raise it, they've got to adjust their livelihood. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Mr. Day?
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. My name is Jake Day. I'm the city council president in Salisbury. Also a county taxpayer and county resident, proud county resident all my life. As was mentioned, grew up in the board of, in Wycomico County Public Schools. So I am a product of the Board of Education. Whether that's good or bad, I'll let you decide. But I just want to say, first and foremost, here to say thank you to the spirit of cooperation, the partnership that the county and the city have been developing over the last months, the past year. I'm thrilled as a resident of this county to see that developing. I'm excited about what that means for our community. The more we find opportunities for collaboration and cooperation, the more we can be efficient with the resources, the limited resources we all have to contribute. And I think efficiency and cooperation are going to be watchwords for the years to come in our community. Specifically tonight, I want to talk to just three very relatively small things, but I think very important things. First and foremost, and I realize some people have already spoken to this, is economic development. The contribution that has been proposed, I believe it's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, to increase the budget this year in economic development is more than the city put in last year. We added about a hundred thousand dollars last year. Actually, excuse me, it was eighty thousand last year. It's increased to about a hundred thousand dollars this year in addition to our contribution to Salisbury-Wycomico Economic Development because we see economic development and the growing of our base and the growing of our economy and the development of jobs, locally grown jobs, as the future to Salisbury and Wycomico County's progress, particularly out of the hard times we've been in. To see the county doing that and more is incredibly inspiring to me. I think it's a good thing. I support it. I want to see it stay in. I hope you're able to keep it in there. Or I recognize that there are tough decisions to be made. I also recognize that investing in our young people, and this is the second thing I want to talk about, investing in our young people is absolutely critical. And I hope that you first and foremost do that through the Board of Education. Again, I realize there are tough decisions to make. But there's also one very small thing I want to talk to you about, and I believe county executive Pollitt and Mr. Strausburger are already working on this. And it may have already been taken care of. Maybe it's not even part of this budget, but I want to reference it. We created something this year, the Salisbury Youth Civics Council. And I believe that that investment in our young people and the creation of that body is an opportunity to select our best and brightest and encourage them to spend time thinking about what their community can be and should be. And now, by joining with the county to create that Salisbury-Wycomico Youth Civics Council, a small investment, we spent six thousand dollars on that group this year. A small investment by sharing that cost, I believe we can together create an even greater investment in our young people, keeping them here and preventing the brain drain that we have suffered from that Dr. Elmore referenced. The third thing that I want to talk about is the investment in the security and receptionist position in the government office building. County Executive Pollitt has at times mentioned to me and to others how our building, as he's traveled the state as president of MAKO, is the only, the only building, the only county office building where you can enter without any security or any receptionist, anyone greeting you. I thought that was pretty interesting to learn. So at our behest, at the city's behest, we encouraged the inclusion of a split position in the budget. And the county stepped up and did it, and the city didn't at first. And I want to apologize for not being a good partner in that regard. But I believe, and I believe with city council vice president Laura Mitchell and our other three council colleagues, we now have that in there. So we are matching that. So as you're making those tough decisions, I encourage you to keep that in there. The city is working to match that, so we will be able to support that position as well. And not only have a secure office building there for our workers, but at the same time, have a friendly face who can direct you through that building, which is otherwise a maze. So I thank you for your time. Again, I thank you for the spirit of cooperation and teamwork with which you've approached everything, particularly investing in our downtown and our entrepreneurs. I'm grateful for that spirit. I thank you. And as a, again, as a county taxpayer, I appreciate the hard decisions you have to make and wish you luck in making those decisions. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council with regard to the budget? Would someone, thank you.
Hello. For those that aren't familiar with me, my name is Jennifer Rooney. I am a case manager employed at Del Point. I've been there well over fourteen years and am very honored and privileged to work with the population whom we serve. I have also lived on the eastern shore of Maryland for over fourteen years. I come from Pennsylvania. And I want to say thank you very, very much to Shore Transit. They have afforded me the opportunity to transport back and forth from work as a case manager through my various travels to the group homes that I visit on a regular basis. I also travel in all three counties, Wycomico, Worcester, and Somerset Counties, to visit family, to help my father down in Chrisfield, who is retired, who otherwise, without my support, could not get a lot of things done that he needs around his home and to go out in the community himself. I also visit my other sister, who's also blind like myself, who is raising her own family in Ocean Pines. And again, without transit, I would not be able to afford this opportunity to be out and about. Another thing I especially wish to say is sure- Another thing I'd especially wish to say is Shore Transit is one of the most kind and caring compassionate organizations and companies that I work with. I am from Pennsylvania originally, and I've experienced their transportation up there, as well as I make frequent trips up north to see my, a good friend of mine that lives in Massachusetts. And I want to say that Shore Transit far out surpasses the services and understanding and compassion that any company could provide to a person with a disability, as myself or anybody else who utilizes them. They have the most outstanding drivers and the most compassionate people to work with, and I'm privileged to be part of their team. So I'm asking if there's any, any funding cuts that Shore Transit, I've, I've seen in the fourteen years in using their services, they've gone through many of changes, many growth. I see a lot of people, whether drivers or passengers, that greatly benefit from these services. So I'm hoping that there is no more budget, the, the budget will be increased and that there's no funding, you know, I'm sorry to back, I'll back up a little bit. My request is that there is more funding so that fares are not increased as they already have been before, because without the support, so many of us could not benefit from. So if there's anything that I can do to be a part of this fantastic team, I am more than willing and privileged and honored to be here this evening with you all.
Thank you very much. Is there one, anyone else who wishes to speak to the budget? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
You can pull it up a little higher.
Very good. My name is Chad Brown. I'm a resident here in Wycomico County in Salisbury, and I'd just like to echo Brad and Jake's comments on supporting the economic development line item. In the current economic climate that we find as the, the country is moving away from manufacturing, what we're seeing is that startups are creating the most amount of new jobs, particularly in the technology field. And one of the best parts of living around here, the proximity to cities like Washington, DC, and Baltimore and Philadelphia, is one of the biggest negatives that we have in the technology industry as far as startups go. We have a lack of human capital here, and one of the, one of the top things that startup companies look for is talent, which they tend to go on the other side of the bay. So anything that we can do to help incentivize, incentivize those companies, we, we need to do it. In doing so, you're also going to see a lot of ancillary benefits. I've heard some of the people talk about education. I've seen in, in larger cities numerous programs where technology, technology professionals work with elementary students to teach them technology skills. So that sort of thing can be provided by the private sector, and then it doesn't have to come out of the, the larger scale budget. So anyway, as I said, I'll keep it short and sweet. I'm in support of the economic development line item.
Mr. Gillis.
I think I might, I think I might have an opportunity to summarize tonight. Maybe if someone's gonna, else is gonna speak, that's fine, but if not, here we go. Again, first of all, thank you. This is a volunteer job. I greatly recognize that, and I appreciate everyone that works as much, as hard as you guys do on, on the council, and hopefully it pays dividends. How many people have lived here for over five years? Raise your hand. Okay. How many people have lived here ten years? Over ten years? Twenty years? Okay, yeah. Thirty years? Okay. There, there's a reason we're all here. It's because we love it here, and we get it. This is a great place to live. And this is honestly one of the best public dialogues that I've ever seen, been a part of, in the limited amount of time that I've been around in the public scene, if you will. So I appreciate the fact that we've kept this dialogue very positive, very constructive. And unfortunately, the, the room's not packed, but it's been very constructive and very positive. So I know we're, appreciate that. Wycomico County, from what I understand, has the fourth lowest real estate taxes in the state of Maryland, if I'm repeating that correctly, and I believe that I am. Is that a fact? Maybe not. We do more with less, in my opinion. As a person who owns property in Wycomico County, I'm okay with paying more, because I feel confident that yourselves and the executive will be good stewards of that money. And quite honestly, as a real estate professional, I want to see paved roads. I want to see a good education system. That brings people into our community, which raises the tide for our community. Salisbury, Maryland, and Wycomico County is the capital of the eastern shore. Whether we want to be or whether we should be, we have to recognize the fact that we are. We are a leader on the shore. We're the metropolitan hub of the eastern shore. We are where people are provided healthcare services, where people are provided transportation to and from work. We are the hub of the eastern shore. We are the capital of the eastern shore. Let's lead like we are the capital of the eastern shore. Let's send inspirational messages. Let's be inspiring. And I think that we're on the cusp of doing that, and we're being, becoming a leader in our own community. Last point, this budget, I believe, is symbolism. It's symbolic of the fact that we're willing to take risks and invest in our community. And if we continue to do that, we are going to be better. It may not be six months from now, it may not be twelve months from now, but if we continue to make these symbolic investments in our community, the tide will rise, and we will become a better community. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else rushing.
Good evening. My name's Ralph Cordery. I'm just a redneck old country boy from the west side of the county, back far west you can go, Sharp Town, Maryland. I'm here tonight to speak in support of Rick Pilat's budget, and I'm also here to represent two things, the use of my community as well as the use of the county. I understand in, in Executive Pilot's budget, there is two things. One thing is the, the replacement of the lights for the Sharp Town and Hebron Ballpark. Those lights were taken down because, because of a safety issue, and I'm in favor of replacing both of them. In, in both of those communities, that ballpark is the life of the, of the community. We have had our, we, Sharp Town in particular has had our school taken away from us. We have als, we have also lost quite a bit of other things. However, the county, at the county ballpark, and I'd like to see you hold that in the budget, if you will. The other thing I'd like to say, I am, I am impressed and with the, with, with one of the things in Rick Pilat's budget about his lowering the player fees for youth sports in Wycomico County. I'm a seven-year member, or was a seven-year member of the Recreation, County Recreation Department, and argued badly, to my chagrin, over the increase in the funds for these children. A family with two or three children that's playing sports in this county don't have a chance. Over the next three years, Executive Pilot has proposed to lower tho, those, that player fees. And I think we'll below, we can, we can do this, and we can lower the player fees back into a, back into a place where it should be, where it shouldn't be exorbitant like it is today. The only other thing I've got to say to you, as I've sit here and listened to a lot of comments tonight, the only thing I've got to say to you, about eighteen months ago, I sat in a meeting in Indianapolis. And when, in this, in this meeting in Indianapolis, it was about, it was about the slot machines in the state of Maryland. I'm, I am in the American Legion, I mean, my American Legion does have slot machines. They do very well in the community because of those slot machines. We give a lot to educational things, we give a lot to sports. But this gentleman stood up and, and I, well, obviously, he's from the wrong side of the bay, but he looked, he looked us, he looked us, and it was all eastern shore people. He looked us in the eye and said, "We don't need you." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cordery. Is there anyone else? Mr. President, seeing none, do you wish to conclude the hearing?
That sounds good. I would like to offer any council members a chance to offer a comment if they so choose. Okay. Quick one.
Thank you, everyone, for your attention.
Thank you very much. Get him a motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Not sure.